Welcome, everybody, to the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees' Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the 24th, 2020. The time is, uh, 6:01 PM. You're all right for the pledge of allegiance. Opinions?
To defy in the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the midst of liberty and justice for all.
This time I would like to take a moment of silence on our military firefighters, sheriff's deputies, red lighters, as they serve our community here abroad. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee McQuire.
President.
Trustee Mann.
President.
Okay, first on the agenda, uh, before we start the meeting, has everybody signed in?
They are.
Got it. Uh, first on the agenda is the fiscal report.
I have a thing for tonight with the special meeting.
Okay.
I just have the, I do have, um, there are bills to be signed in the mailbox, but I don't have any, any reports. I didn't know we were gonna have full agenda tonight, because I didn't have a duty due until right now. So what?
I have something for the fiscal officer. Um, I was given the check today for the total of $3,130.20 from Carl R. Chipghitter for his second half of the 2020 Faraway and Rip. And I want to give that check to your number 187. Tracy, he handed that to me, didn't he?
Okay.
Woo! It's all there.
Yeah. At this time, I make a motion to pay the bills, pay the invoices, appropriations, and warrants.
My second motion.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McQuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Good. Full business. Uh, we have a resolution to Resolution 2-12. Uh, that was passed at the last meeting.
So I might, um, I just have to add one of the questions on, on the previous resolution. Everything's stuck together, right?
It's what I see.
Okay. So it was, um, the one, two, three, four line down. I made a correction. Yes, it probably adds an 18. Is yours about 18?
No.
That's for eight, the, the third line down, $8,945.57. I'm sorry, $19,627.21. It was $10,681.74. That's a difference of $8,945.57. So a total change in line item change, that's the only difference. It's just, again, this is just to, um, directly post the funds for the, for the fund ledger. It's nothing, nothing changed in the amount of money we get.
Okay, so just so the records clear, the previous resolution had the same amounts and basically no change to line item 2081, 210, 314, 000. The amended resolution, or the new, are we changing the resolution or are we just approving the change?
We're, uh, approving the change, plus the date on the previous, my God.
Good.
You can always make it 20-102-A or 102-1 if you'd like to signify you have two separate resolutions if you want, or like, uh, the fiscal officer said, you can do it that way as well.
Let's do Resolution 20-102A so it's easy to track. So Resolution 20-102A is an amendment to Resolution 20-102, approving 2020 supplemental appropriations totaling $304,405.76. That's not right.
What did you say?
At the, uh, top of the preamble, it has 304, 405, 76. The old resolution had 77,000, 025, 10.
The total amount is the change, the change though. Where's this change? Yes, it is a change though. Not the revised appropriation though.
So we want to strike that total from the preamble. Or you have a total.
Did you, did you double it up?
Yeah, I can run it. Okay, it's 34, 405, 76, so the decimal's off.
I put a zero on that.
Yeah.
34, 405, 76.
Correct. All right, I'm gonna reread this. Resolution number 20-102A, amendment to Resolution 20-102, approving 2020 supplemental appropriations totaling $34,405.76. The changes from the previous resolution was changing line item 2081, 210, 314, 000, changing the revised appropriation from 10, 681, 74 to 19,627, 21. That's the only change from the previous past resolution.
And the foot of date, 10, 27, 10 to 24.
Good, and the dates changed. I move to adopt Resolution 20-102A.
Our second motion.
Okay, we have a second on Mission 20-102A. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee McQuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Your room. Your next on the agenda, uh, discussion on our safety and security issue. Who ended that project?
I do. Trustee, you, at the last meeting, um, um, it was tabled and your request was that we went back to between vendors equally, gave them the fair opportunity to bid on the same standard, to provide a proposal on the same standard, in the same amount of time, and at all emails included, the legal counsel in on it. Also, we were waiting on an answer, if you might remember, Part Two, waiting on an answer from the legal counsel, whether the touchless system, which is a swipe card, is allowed to include the burglar alarm or the fire alarm system or not under CARES Act. We all sent the response from, uh, from, um, uh, our legal counsel. It was in his opinion that the, the security system and fire system would not be applicable unless it's sold by one complete system. So I was already ahead of his response because I did not have a response by Friday, and I wanted to give the vendors enough time to prepare an alternate bid. So, um, I sent out Friday a request to, uh, the vendors, asking them to separate their proposal, one, for just the touchless system, and two, if they chose, they, you know, they could always include the security system and the, and the fire system separately. Got responses back from all three on Friday that they had received that request, and sent two emails on Friday to make sure that no one was missed or, or did that time. Um, and so they had until 12 noon today to turn in proposals. Um, so I have both proposals that are here that are sealed. I'll bring them to you. I'll let you open them up. I guess that you're going to read them there. We did not receive a third bid. So you might want to read off the names of who, on the front of the envelope first, Roy, before you open it up, so you can say who the company is.
C O P P Systems. You want to, but you won't read it out of here. I already think this.
Are the bids all broken down in different legs? Is that what it is?
Yeah, what was sent out Friday was every location and the requirements of how many door strikes or swipe, uh, equipment needed at each of those facilities, um, and then a total of how many of those were. Because when you got your first three bids last meeting, if you remember, they were all three completely different, and they needed to have an opportunity to bid with the same equipment based on the same standards. So they should be, I have, obviously they're sealed, so I have a look at them.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be reading off the certificate of liability insurance. That's the only thing that's here that has a number five. That's one second.
We asked each vendor to provide their insurance, their workers' comp certificates, and the body that they had, and references to any clients that they worked for.
On Calumet Center, they are quoting, he's quoting Calumet Center, Station 59, Station 60, Fire Station 61, room, garage, and Fire Station 62. And his total has come up $166,842.21. Do you want me to read everything that's listed on here? Or just give you those?
I think you're looking at just pricing at this point.
All right. And that does not include the security system?
I'm sorry?
Does not include, you said that does not include the security or intrusion, logic protocol of security system, safety security system, that's not included in that?
Okay, objective of task. Cup system will install a cloud-based access control system with readers for six locations around Jefferson Township. The system requires a monthly subscription per door. This proposal has one year provided at a cost of $4,158.60. And at the bottom of our proposal is an opinion to front-load this project from multiple years if desired. Proper electric strikes plates and hardware to be installed where necessary for a full function, functional system. The system is cloud-based, which allows the administration to make changes to the system whenever and wherever needed. A maintenance agreement can be provided that has technology available for service calls at the hourly rate of $1, $159 per hour. No monthly cost to maintain the system, provided all subscriptions are paid and current. Their responsibility at Calumet Center, 580 Calumet Lane, Dayton, Ohio, 45417, is install one access control system for 15 doors and one gate, including the door hardware where necessary. Front outside double doors, front inner vestibule doors, inside doors to office, rear exterior doors from offices, 12 interior doors, one exterior gate, and power will be, will need to be provided by owner. At Fire Station 59, 7828 Dayton Liberty Road, gonna install a access control system for six doors. The reader and door hardware for front door, reader and door hardware for back door, reader and door hardware for exterior door in Bay Area, reader and door hardware for three other doors. At Fire Station 60, One Business Park Drive, they're gonna install the access control system for 17 doors, including door hardware where necessary. The reader and door hardware for the front door, Star Administrative Door, back door in Bay Area, side door in Bay Area, and 13 other doors. At Fire Station 61, South Union Road, Route 4, Northeast Corner, Dayton, gonna install the control system for one door, including door hardware where necessary, rear end door hardware for one door. Internal and cellular connection will need to be provided by owner to work. At the road garage, there are 1495 South Union Road, gonna install one access control system for gate and six doors. Gonna have a reader for the gate entry, reader for a door into the building immediately inside the gate, including door hardware, reader and door hardware for five other doors. Fire Station 62, Road Department Office, 1525 Kimball Lane, gonna install one access control system for two doors, including the door hardware where necessary, reader and door hardware for front door, reader and door hardware for back door in Bay Area. The client's responsibility is gonna have to provide access to job site Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, provide the credentials needed, provide network drop-to-control panels, provide electric car and conduit runs from gate where needed, provide network to cellular access to all locations, and provide assistance in programming doors. Assuming assumption and clarification, no electrical work is needed, and there is adequate space and conduit where needed. All doors have standard locking mechanism. Any special cases may require change order. All proposed labor is at prevailing wage, one-year warranty on parts and labor. Any variations to this proposal may be provided at an additional cost and must be documented in writing. All work is gonna be done between, on Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00. Sale tax is not included. And they said, applicable, please add. On-site storage material is not included. Stored material will be billed upon receipt in order to accommodate with this agreement. No performance bond, payment bond, or permits are included in this proposal. Starting completion date to be agreed upon after signing agreement. Progressively billed monthly, 30% of fee required, the net is 30 days. Without establishing credit, 50% will have to be put down in order for this to be billed. And they will set master charge visa, American Express, Discovery, seller charges. Deliveries listed bill material, door hardware, or electrical strike, where applicable, functional cloud-based access control system. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this proposal. I look forward to the possibility of working with you and your team. Please call me if you have any question about this proposal.
What was the total again, please?
The total was...
And did it say how much the, the yearly fee that we have to pay over here? And that includes?
The yearly cost for all car access locations only. It's $4,158.60 a year.
Does that mean that after, after we pay the amount, we're gonna have to have in our budget $4,000 a year? Keep that system up?
Yes.
But is it in that $166,000 of the state?
Or if you want to pay it five years, um, it's gonna be $16,634.47. Any other questions, I don't know? The next one is from HSI Security Incorporated, 3880 Kettering Boulevard, Kettering, Ohio. And this, um, their toll...
Who's, who's the vendor who submitted this?
HSI Security Incorporated. Okay, I'm gonna start at this one here. They've got a service contract of one year, and parts and labor on, on equipment, $8,000... Eight thousand twenty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Service contract for two years, it's fourteen thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. For three years, it's sixteen thousand forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. And for a five-year, it's eighteen thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. Okay, they, what they gonna do at the admin building? It's secure four door panels, bell housing, different parts of, of the locks. They're gonna have remote management cloud service, one-time fee. They all have a card reader, one hundred and twenty-five. And KHZ is the, uh, what they're using as, uh, for that. They're gonna have a large, uh, let me, let me back up just for a second here. They've got, uh... Okay, let's, 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 let me start this one over. Their bill, their contract at the end is seventy-one thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and forty cents. That's HSI Security Incorporated.
Can you read that again, seventy-one?
Seventy-one thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and forty cents. And, uh, they just went down and gave the number of, uh, of, uh, items that they were using. Like they had in a... Well, let me read it here. The four-door panels, there's gonna be four. The remote management cloud service, one. Fifteen readers, thirteen large mouth stripes, one surface-mounted rim stripe, seventy-two CAT five E riser cables, and seventy-five keychain bulbs. So, they just, just getting the amount of things and listing those. But they're, like I said, their toll on this one is seventy-one thousand. They don't list it like, uh, the other companies.